Let's call the meeting order for May 2,024. I'm probably much.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, what bills?
Yep.
Sign. All sign. Who are the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda for May 8, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the April 24, 2024 meeting.
All in favor? Time of the town minister of week update?
No real update for you this week. We have two new staff members in. We are working on getting everybody in their proper roles, converting Lauren Moore to the treasurer position. We have our new assistant Greg and Cheryl who's joining us again. So most of our time is just being focused on recreating roles and training, lots of training, so.
Okay. Department head, committee chair updates? See none? Okay liaison updates?
Okay. As Jennifer had said, Lauren Hespen, who was appointed, received a six-month appointment last week as our treasurer, is undergoing continued training. Mark Roy is providing a fair amount of training to her and working well. The two are working very well and, you know, continue to feel very good about the management office. Last week, the broadcast of the selectmen meeting did not occur. I wanted to let you know that it was taped and, or recorded, I should say, and it has now been posted. So whether something gets broadcast or not, it won't prevent the meeting from being recorded and those are posted on some regular schedule. But we're taking a fresh look at our procedures to understand exactly what's gone on. This is, it also happened with the forestry committee as well last night. So we don't believe there's anything wrong with the technology. It's probably just our own internal procedures and we'll, we're going to be working with, with the director of that app to make sure that we've got everything in place that needs to be in place. The cemetery committee is not meeting over the summer. They're spending their time working on rehabbing cemeteries throughout the town. We received, I'm sorry, let me shut this off. We received a set of budget statements from Mark Roy. He's been doing this every month. I've had a chance to go through those and I spoke to Jennifer and we're asking each department head to just take that April report and to do a forecast. Where do they think they're going to be at year end? Just to make sure if there are any potential issues, we have time to react to that before it becomes an actual issue. So department heads will be, will be doing that. Has that been done before, Jennifer?
No.
No. So this, I think is a good practice and so Lauren and Jennifer will work with the department heads to make sure that it's done. As far as the code office, they've been busy pulling permits for the last year, last year.
Yeah.
That have been issued. I guess it's over, there are hundreds. And those permits are being reviewed by the assessor to update our appraisal values for the town. So I believe some notices had gone out. I saw it in the email.
Yeah.
And actually saw them on my property, so I know they're out there. And so everyone should be aware that this is a routine process. Someone pulls a permit, you do some additional work, probably going to add value to your assessed value, and this is the process for getting that all done. That's it for me.
Perfect.
Ed?
Transfer station side of things, we're getting real close on a, hopefully a plan of how we're going to revamp or looking to revamp the entrance, the exits up there, get away from the crisscross and just make it all around a better, easier way of dealing with your trash and recyclables.
How did that, Ed, how did that meeting end with Ron? What is the next step? Is there any direction that we're just kind of taking it in?
I have a couple of questions for the engineer. Yeah, nothing of any substance.
Okay. I just wasn't sure what the, the plan was.
Yeah, no, it's just, I mean, we don't have the money right now to do it, so it's just a matter of getting the plan together. Some point, go up, knock out, just to run a tape measure around a little bit, make sure the plan matches the land, basically, which it should. I mean, the engineer did the plan, so.
I'll send you his contact.
Yeah. So we've got that pretty much ironed out. He's on board with it. The other members of the board here just need to look it over some more and at some point we'll have to give it our approval or disapproval. So that's getting real close there. Lincoln School, got a visit over the weekend, notified that a couple of windows up there were broken over some of the storms we've had. Branch came down. So we're having our town handyman go up and assess that and take care of those windows.
Okay.
Nothing for the school department until tomorrow's meeting, but just an update. It is teacher appreciation week, so if you do see a teacher, you know, tell them thank you. They do a lot of great work. I know the PTG's doing a lot of stuff for them this week in recognition of the work they do. Last night, attended the forestry and conservation meeting. They are currently in the process of working on in ordnance. Also, they have some dates set that they're looking into doing some site walks for some of the town properties that, I don't know if they're going to tell you yet, but you should be hearing the next couple of days about some of those proposed dates. And then for Mary, and we also have just received someone who's interested in joining the committee, so we'll be scheduling a meeting with them next week to kind of like just talk to them, talk more about what that would look like. And then Mary Grant is in the process of scheduling their next meeting. They haven't settled on a date yet.
Okay, roads, road committee. I don't believe the road committee has scheduled any, I think I'm going to be waiting until after July 1st.
Exactly, yep, exactly. For the new members.
Yep, and the rec committee, I think probably does a refresher. We did get a, an email from Mr. Taylor that he's working on the plans.
Yes, yeah, that's right. And he wanted to swap those. Do you remember that? He wanted to swap?
Yeah, so I'm going to screw this up. We need a water management plan from the state, approved from the state, DB. And so, out of his original quote of doing this plan, that wasn't included, but he had the planning board stuff included. Well, he doesn't need to do that. It's almost the same thing. So he just got flip-flopped and so it's not going to cause us any extra.
Exactly.
And.
Well said.
Yeah, so, so he is working on that, so I'm pretty excited about that. And I guess the rec committee, we just figured I'd throw this out there. There's a cheer clinic for pre-K to seventh grade. There's a deadline on that, on May 24th, so if anybody wants to do a cheer in for this clinic, they have to have their stuff by the 24th.
It's really taken up. I think it's really sweet. That was a good idea.
And David presenting it couldn't be better.
That's not for me to say.
I was looking for the football sound, it wasn't there. So, so I'm going to, I'm going to continue on. That's it. That's all I have for my liaison update. Okay, we've got no old business. We're going to go to new business. Fire department. Good evening, everybody?
How are you doing?
Pretty good. Pretty good. All right, first thing on my list, I got three items, which.
They have the email?
I see, yep.
With the packet right in order?
Yep, perfect. So I'm doing it. Yeah, I think I put the grant first.
Yeah, I put the announcement in there, you know.
Yeah, so I don't need that. I've seen it, right? I'm going to read, I'm going to read what the grant is and what I did with it. So a few, I don't know, like months ago, maybe a little over that, pursued a grant through main municipal association, through the Ed McDonald Fund. It's a safety enhancement grant. It's designed to fund equipment or items to reduce the risk of injury to workers and promote safe and healthy conditions in the workplace. I have some equipment that's been failing and whatnot, so we put in for a grant for three cold water rescue suits and six throw bag that I'll put on each of the fire trucks. Basically, those are, they're in a little bag and you throw them out to people that are in the water. You can pull them in that way before you actually put people in the water if you can reach the 75 feet. But the total on that grant was up to 3,000. I think we spent $2,909.36.
Good job.
They approved it and awarded us the grant. So.
So that's coming from Vergeron?
Yeah, yeah, I attached the, or I had sent Jack for the quote. Basically, we purchase it initially and then we submit the paperwork and we pay the bill and they'll reimburse us that amount. So with your support, I'd like to continue on and give us support.
So technically, the commander suits break down to about $900 each. So it's really under the individual policy. And then the Mustang rope, six of them are about 300, so total is the 29, but per item.
And this is the supplier we use for a lot of our personal protective equipment.
Try to stay with one supplier as much as you can, don't you?
Yes.
It's good.
Just to keep stuff, so if something breaks or something happens, I'm not trying to hunt around where we purchased it from. It's, it's within a couple of people.
So does, before we go on, does the board have any concerns with the quote for Vergeron protecting? Can we get a motion on that one?
There's no other place you can purchase that, right?
Not where I got quotes for when I applied for the grant. Those are the numbers I used to apply for the grant and that was what was awarded. So that's the same equipment we have currently, so I wouldn't have to redo any training or anything like that. It's all stuff that.
This 2909, that's the grant's paying for that?
Correct.
And per item, it's under the 1,000.
Yeah. I hear you.
It's true. I mean, that's written.
In this case, yeah, I mean, it's a grant.
Yeah. We have, like I said, we have initially paid for it, but we can't reimburse it. We have the money in the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of three cold water suits and six throw bags.
Second.
In the amount of 2,909.36.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you. That is one of two grants. I have another one that, based on what Jennifer and I have been working on, that I'm fairly confident that we're probably getting, awarded that grant and that is upwards of $15,000. So Timothy Chief Smith and I have been working on, on that. It's due to the mania mess, based on our call volume and stuff that we do. So that's no cost to us. They are, from what we've gathered, I believe they're going to be sending us a check here shortly. So.
For how much?
15,000.
Ooh. And what is that going to be used for?
It's going to be used to purchase AEDs and the equipment we need for the AEDs. I got three fire trucks without AEDs. My goal is to get an AED on every market vehicle we have for in the event that we're out doing driver training, we have some of that equipment onboard. It is also one for the town hall to replace the one that's out here and one to add as a transfer station where that seems to be getting busier and busier all the time. So it's for the fire department, but as the town, that'll put all our, like the one that we have here in town hall doesn't take the same supplies that we have in stock for our equipment, so this will put everybody on the same equipment, the same stuff. So when the AED pads that you put on somebody, those expire every couple of years, so I already have them, so I can just swap them out instead of special ordering stuff we need for, excuse me, for this one.
And we did talk about some townwide staff training, once those come in. So we'll bring everybody in and do your training on those and some other things.
We'll do that training.
I, Wayne will do that training.
Well, not me, I got staff.
You'll have, yes.
I do have a question about just the AEDs and it might be a foolish question, but do you know about the school, part of their budgets, they're looking into another AED, so has there been any discussion about potentially?
When, when I originally, I met with John, the superintendent, early in the school year, and I expressed that my goal was to get three additional AEDs at the school. They already have one. I wanted another one on each wing and one with their go-bag when they evacuate the building. That will also be cross-used to go up to the rec field when they have sporting events. So they should be, I'm assuming, buying the same thing that we already have down there and the rest of the town uses. So when we show up, it direct plugs in. I can follow up with him to ensure that that is the plan. I'm assuming they'll probably get ordered.
Through you.
Through us because we're going to get that discount probably that the agency gets done.
So I'd probably confirm that one. I'll make sure that's the case.
Yeah, I'll follow up with him to make sure. But that was the original attempt when I met with him before. They, they were going to try to do it earlier in the year and then obviously they added that to their CIP plans this year. So that was at my request.
I assume you're going to want to use the same manufacturer of this?
Yeah, there's only one person that makes the ones that we have.
Are they, are they available through different outlets or is it directly with the factory?
One provider, one.
One provider?
Yeah, it's, it's.
So it's sole source, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, it's made by Seoul, which is the same people that have our cardiac monitors. Now, you can get it from one place. So stay tuned on that. More when I know more. Jennifer receives a check. So getting on my list, I'm coming to ask for permission to, looking to purchase, basically a roll hitch valve. In that email, it's a Siamese Y roll hitch valve.
Say it again, slowly.
Siamese Y, which is what we refer to as a roll hitch valve. So two lines come in to supply water to one truck. I have two of them that we've had over the years. I'm looking to add a third one that'll put one on every truck. They are the cheapest price I have here, $1,215, which is what I recommend. But I have three quotes that I attached there that go all the way up to $1,800. So because it's over the $1,000 threshold, I'm just looking for permission to make that purchase. I have the money in my budget. I recommend the $1,200 one. It's the same exact thing as the other ones. These are three of the vendors we use on a regular basis. From what I've gathered is the reason why the price is so low on one of them compared to the others is because they have, they're the primary dealer for this area. The other ones can sell it, but they don't get the discount that this other dealer gets.
They don't sell the volume here.
Yeah. And it's, and it, the other ones partner with other manufacturers in similar items, so they, they, they don't allow them to compete with each other.
So quality-wise, it's as good as the other ones?
Correct. Exact same thing. What I heard running, seven, eight, half. It's just over that threshold, so I'm asking.
The one thing that I just, you know, I want to be clear that I have no issue picking something more expensive, wanting the values there, quality. You know, we're not looking for the lowest, we're looking for just.
Correct. And that's the homework that, as a department head, I will already do before I come to you to make sure it's.
We want to make sure that we're not telling the department heads they have to go the lowest price. We want the quality and that's what your dollars is calling.
Yeah, it's the exact same thing as we already have.
So will you get a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion. We go with fire tech and safety for $1,215 for the Siamese Y.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. All right, the last one.
It's on the top page.
I think I wrote it down enough in the email, but the long and the short of it, the current incident management and inventory control software we use has been bought out. It's no longer going to be supported as of January 1st. The new company that bought them out is also the same company I'm looking to go to. They, a lot of other departments around here are doing the same thing, using the same software, so all our stuff talks to each other. This software, because it's bought out by the company, the new company, they're going to give us, they're going to prorate the amount we already paid because we've already paid for our yearly subscription into this service, which we've been doing for years. They're going to credit us that money towards the new software. The new software to come online to do everything is an additional, these numbers are based on July 1st. I'll have updated numbers that if we move forward tonight, it'll be a little less than this, but is an additional $2,218.75. That is to go to the new software, but that's also for them to take all our records and stuff that's in the cloud and transfer it over into the new software. So they do all that work for us. There's some stuff that won't transfer, transfer over that I'll have to build out, but we won't be starting from scratch.
And that's through June 30th to 25?
Say what?
When is that going to be paid, paid through?
Well, I believe that's Mar, I think our other one was March, so I'm assuming it's that same timeframe.
So you're picking up. You're picking up three-month credit effectively?
Yeah, well, so we paid, we paid, we just paid for our current software $2,275. If I, I got numbers for July 1st because I wasn't sure what we were going to do. They're going to credit us $1,706.25 towards the new software, so I'd have to pay an additional $2,218.
So what's the annual increase?
The annual increase, $460 moving forward.
After the first?
After, after this first year. So next year.
Do you have your retention cost?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Got it, got it.
So next year, when I go to renew the software, it's going to be roughly $460 more than what I'm currently paying this year's.
You'll have to budget that next season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right there.
So what are you asking for most?
Well, because it's over, it's over a thousand bucks, I'm asking to spend that additional money to make the transfer now so I can take the most, the biggest advantage out of what we've already paid and move forward into the new software. But I've got to spend an additional $2,200 bucks, which I have in the budget. I just need to make sure I can spend it. We could wait and do it sometime between now and January 1st, but we're not, we're going to lose that prorated amount.
So you're pretty much, the way I guess, we're using the same company, but different company, they bought them out, so you're not really changing companies.
No. Well, the software is different though.
It's under, it's under a new name. It's under a new name.
Upgraded software.
What does the software do?
It's where we document all our incidents, every emergency call we go on. It does all our inventory controls, like equipment that's on trucks, equipment that's issued to people, it tracks all our stuff, it tracks all our maintenance requests, the stuff that gets broke if people are airing up in there, it tracks all our vital records, not just hard copying and filing, but digitally at our fingertips.
So you have remote access? You have remote access, which is on the cloud?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, if we, if we don't do what he wants to do, we're going to lose our credit, right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, that would be kind of foolish.
Yeah.
I have no issue with it at all, so I think that's a good idea. Is it what you want, right?
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. What kind of motion would I need?
Yeah, we just make a motion to approve the software change requested by the chief.
Make a motion that we approve the software upgrade. What would the amount be?
$2,218.75. That's with the.
Well, that's.
That's the dry, that's the number is probably going to change.
You can say not received.
We'll just approve the software upgrade.
Yeah, within reason.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
So.
Awesome.
No painless.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Poll permit? Yeah, my favorite, yeah.
Wester Drive, it's like, there you are, Tom.
Yeah, I'm going to pass that right there. I've done one of those, I'm not doing another one.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the poll permit. Near house, 1152 Wesher Drive. That's the address they gave us.
Second.
All in favor?
Go.
One tenor, you need one?
Uh, no, I need this majority.
Okay, we're going to move down here to Breeze Line Franchise Fee.
So per the poll at town meeting that we took, the very last article, for those of you that hung out to the end, the board gave the instruction to ask Breeze Line to update the agreement, so they have done that. This is, dear board of selectmen, per your request, Breeze Line in the town would amend the current agreement to reduce the franchise fee, section 10.1, from equal to zero now. So this will take effect in 90 days from the date that you sign it. There is room just for one, so the motion needs to be to approve the chairman to sign it. And in 90 days, if you have Breeze Line, you should see that franchise fee go away.
Is, is 90 days something that's in the contract? You have to comply with?
Yes, you have to give them 90 days number.
All right. I'll, I'll move that we approve the agreement with Breeze Line to eliminate the franchise fee effective 90 days from today.
To have David sign it, right? To have the chair sign it?
Yeah.
Or just the check?
Second. All in favor? Public comment? Any public comment? Nope, okay, well. I guess, motion.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
No, never mind. We're outside.
Did you ask for a public comment?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was, I was waiting too. It might have been my fault.
I missed it.
We almost got it by.
All over that. Let's go to the next week. I just had a couple of sort of housekeeping questions, and you've actually answered some of them. Have, and we heard about, from CMP.
CMP disconnected the power today.
Oh, great. So that kind of goes with the questions I have. I know we're waiting for our budget to come in, but do, do we have kind of dates in mind when we could do the projects we're talking about doing, whether it be the parking lot, transfer station, that sort of?
There's, there's no dates.
Except for this building, this is going to come down.
The building's coming down, but what we're doing with the parking lot, we're still trying to come up with it. I've got some ideas, some new ideas, I think. And, but, well, a few things have been brought to our attention, you know, with the election hall and stuff and, you know, I mean, I've just thrown this out there, but, you know, we're going to need our new vote, please, it's our vote.
I think that the idea too was after, after we got the final build for everything that was done over there, we're going to look at that article, see what was left in it. So as soon as it's completely done, we'll bring it back to the board, see what's in there. But that and the transfer station, you know, we're going to have to come back to town meeting for some.
We got a long process because after we, we sign off on the plans, then we got to go RP on, you know, have them written up, set out, get some bids on this project. And then at that point, we got to go to town meeting because we don't have the money. And this up here.
Whatever money we have, if we just go do this, 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 and this, we got no money.
Well, yeah.
Exactly.
But the rec field, I think we're finally getting some progress. You know, I mean, I think, I honestly think we'll have a plan here shortly that we're going to.
Yeah, that just came in, yeah.
The little thing that's going to hold us up, I think, was, did he mention a three-month, something about the permit process for the?
Yes, he did.
There's going to be a little bit of a weight on the permit from the state. But I honestly, it's a good idea that we did what we did. Because if we hadn't done that, we're just going to throw the parking lot in.
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been something. Two other, other things. Does this Breeze Line zero thing now, does that mean we're not interested in the other company?
No, they're not related.
Okay, those are true.
So our, our attorney is working on, he actually reached out to me and Michelle Ruminy to confirm. We had both sent him the draft Comcast agreement, so because he works for both towns, he's reviewing them together and he'll split the bills in half. So it was going to be, you know, 14, 21 days. It's quite a contractor and a review, but they're not related. But we will make sure that if the board was for Comcast, that the same 0% would be in there.
Great, great. And any idea at all, and, and not for our road department, but do we know if the state, as well as, as us, are going to pick up any more of the trees that are still this close to the road?
And we talked town roads and state roads.
Both actually, both actually. I mean, I think we're pretty lucky. It's been so rainy, but if you look along the streets and you see all these trees down, it can be pretty scary. You know, it just takes one lightning bolt, one something. And, and, you know, I think the state is 100% worse than the town has been. I know the guy's been out.
Yeah, the state's a little bit behind, especially going to the New Hampshire town line. It looks like a ball went off. Trees are still on the road.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think for the, for the town, if there's any specific roads, because we. believe that Will is, is almost done and working on wrapping it up. So if there's a specific town road that you have concern on, we would ask that you reach out to Will Langley directly. And as you know, we have no authority over the state. So, you know, I'm happy if the board instructs to call DOT to check with them to see. But, you know, I'd be looking for a list of some roads that you have concerns with, so we can give them specifics.
I would make a phone call to Northbrook and Alfred and say, hey, you know, we have some roads up here that, you know.
So you just send a email with the roads, so that I know what to say when I call?
Yeah, it might be something Will overlooked also, too. You know, he's got a lot of, trying to do his spring cleanups and stuff.
They're doing, they're doing a good job, and they can only be in one place at one time.
Yep, yep.
Send them a, send them a gift.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Nope.
Yep.
Okay.
So I moved to return at 6:31.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Good night.